Go on.
We follow Jay's instruction.
I think this one will take very long.
Okay. Item number 22, 2017, 61BZ, 5118 Main Street Queens.
Richard Lobel of Shovin' Lobel PC for the applicant.
Okay, yeah, this one is fast. So, that was a thrilling FAA study, I tell you.
I'm not sure whether or not you're totally sarcastic.
No, I'm not. I'm being genuine because I read every one of those approach analyses, and I'm like, "There's a what?"
You're never gonna get in a plane again.
Well, and some of them you read, and you're just like, "It's way over the maximum allowable height for that approach, but so are 28 other buildings in the area for an emergency landing for a small plane." See how for visual flight, for a small plane, they're in trouble.
Well, one day they'll move LaGuardia to Rikers Island.
Yeah, right.
We're happy to contribute to the long-term planning of the city of New York.
So, okay, so, and the other thing was the little no obstruction, no objection, no obstruction correction was made, so I don't think there was anything else. And there are no speakers, right? Nope? Okay. So then I'd like to close this.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition, and the condition is what we see on the drawings, that no obstructions of any kind may exceed a height of 216 average mean sea level, and FAA required red flashing warning light shall be utilized and maintained at all times, and no temporary construction equipment can exceed the maximum height of 216 feet above mean sea level without FAA approval.
Construction of temporary?
Well, it's construction equipment, so this is temporary construction-related equipment. It's, obviously, you can't have permanent equipment, but you can't even have a crane up there, right? So, okay, so on that motion.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners and staff for the close attention to this matter.
Thank you for that great report. Who knows to the reporter?
Okay, so we're gonna take a break?
Yes.
Okay, so how, what time?
Thirty minutes, thirty minutes, one?
Two thirty?
Two thirty, yes.
Two thirty?
Two thirty.
Okay, we're gonna resume at two thirty.
That's not enough time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good afternoon, we're back on the calendar, this is a public hearing for June 27th, 2017, zoning calendar. New cases, we're gonna take item number two first, 2016, 4354BZ, 5109 Fourth Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Simon Rothschild for the applicant.
Hi.
My brother Adam comes here, well, I'm here, he'll be here, he's stuck on the subway, I think, there some delays, some delays on the subway today.
I don't know that we need two guns for this, so...
I understand, based on the executive session, there was a question about the e-designation and the notice of receipt, I believe our office provided that, I'm not sure if there are any other issues.
Did they? I don't know.
They sent a letter for a question.
They said to proceed for, when the building was going to be expanded and incorporated, the commercial use, and only prohibited changes would be vegetable gardening and groundwater-related, and any intensive, more intensive use than was considered, so, you're comfortable?
So if you're comfortable with no vegetable gardening in the PC, then we're all right.
Yes, we're comfortable with that.
A new form of CrossFit.
Has the gym open?
It doesn't.
No, it's under construction.
You had a question yesterday about that.
I did a site visit, it's under construction.
Under construction.
Okay. All right, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so then we can close it, right? There's no open issues, so for motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
That's it. Thank you, Simon.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon.
Item number one, 2016, 4299BZ, 280 Richard Street, Brooklyn.
We attended the review session yesterday, I figured I'd just address some of the major items that came right off the bat. We also are joined by our architects and our transportation consultants that can get into some of the technical details on the transportation study, et cetera. There was a little bit of a question of the uses on the site and how they broke down, especially the retail use and the rooftop, just wanted to briefly note, there is a very small portion of this development that is proposed for retail, it's about 24,000 square feet of the 640-some-odd-thousand square feet in total. It's all would be either streetfront retail, or one of the ends of the buildings.
You can pick your mic up and point.
Too tall, okay, sure.
Okay, no, you can go over the drawings and...
Great. So, yeah, so of the 24,000, most of them are broken up, the way the loading docks come in means you can't have an unbroken streetfront of retail, so it really breaks up the biggest size of these retail boxes. It will likely be at least four boxes on Beard Street, in the corner here on either side of the central visual corridor, and then another corner. The largest of these here is about 5,800 square feet. The single biggest potential retail would be at the end, potentially at the end, if it's not an amenity space. This is just north of 7,000 square feet, could be either retail, more likely to be something like a restaurant. None of these retailers are over 7,000, 7,300 square feet, and we actually, the zoning won't allow us to have big box here, it's an M3, so we can't have clothing stores or furniture stores or anything larger than 10,000 square feet. The parking demand study analyzed this as all is essentially local retail, this is not, it's not a really primary location, it's not a place that if you don't have a critical mass, IKEA next door is about 350,000, Fairway's 65,000, you need a fairly sizable retailer to get people drawn in here from outside of Red Hook. We envision most of this retail will be used by the thousands of office tenants in the 600,000 square feet, or potentially the Red Hook community up and down Van Brunt Street and the Red Hook houses.
Or all the many hundreds, if not thousands, of people who come from other parts of the city to go to IKEA and Fairway and all the groovy stuff that happens in Red Hook.
That is correct, what the engineers sometimes call linked trips, right? So, yes. A second question that came up is also on loading, how loading interfaces with parking, and for that, I think the, yeah, this, by the way, was the first floor plan, this is the cellar plan, which has the majority of the parking facility. There are two entrances and exits to the garage, there's the, call it the eastern entrance and the western entrance. The western entrance is the primary entrance and exit, that will essentially be the primary, almost the only entrance and exit at almost all times for the garage. During the peak afternoon into early evening peak hour, we anticipate there's a possibility that it might be good to have some redundancy, so that people aren't lining up to get out, and for that moment, for, call it somewhere between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, there may be a desire to use the exit on the, it's called the eastern exit, but again, that's only for about an hour to a day, and it would be in the afternoon. This would coincide with a period of loading that is one of the lowest periods of loading during the day.
But you're showing it as two ways?
Yep.
And you're also showing it as an access, so how would anybody who's coming to the parking know to go to the western entrance?
Right, well, there could be signage here that would essentially say, you know, like, no parking access, truck loading only, and direct everybody here. We anticipate, unlike a garage that is a transient garage for retail, people that come here and park here wouldn't be more likely to be people that come here every day and park, because they come to work every day, they're gonna get used to the rhythm and the routine of how this thing operates. There's also, it should be known that the loading dock itself does not conflict with the entrance and exit, it's only if there's a truck that's backing up and getting out of that loading bay, that temporarily exits might have to be halted by the dock master. And even with that, we anticipate it's only the loading docks that are further south, because they'd have to pull back into here to get out, the ones that are further to the north could actually pull in in this area here, not infringe with the exits. And so we think there'll be really minimal conflicts on that exiting there. The third point was with regard to some details of the traffic analysis and mode split and mode share, and how many people are driving and parking, and for that, I'm just gonna do a very, very brief overview of this, from more of a planner's perspective, and our traffic engineer can talk about it from more of a technical perspective as to the study they did. So, one thing we're seeing in doing not just BSA parking reductions, but doing discretionary approvals throughout the city, is that for the past, I'm gonna say at least 10 or 15 years, parking demand studies have tended to grossly overestimate the demand for the use of parking facilities. We're seeing that throughout the city, and we've also seen it, because DOT has asked that we do post-opening traffic studies for a lot of these, and it's more, more tends to be retail projects that I have personal experience with, but we've done a few studies, and the studies have essentially uniformly shown that the parking demand is much lower than the Seeker estimates have shown. So the parking demand for IKEA next door is a great example. So, after IKEA opened, before IKEA opened, a full EIS was done, and the EIS showed the peak hour, of the 1,250 spots at IKEA, there might be a demand for upwards of about 1,140. Two years later, IKEA opened, and we actually had consultants go out, and this was in a previous iteration of this project, to see what the neighbors were experiencing, they went out and they determined that there was, as far as parking goes, there were a maximum of about 660 people using spaces, which is a 42% reduction over the projections. Same thing with just cars coming into and out of the site. They projected that there would be, there would be something along the order of 1,385 vehicles, there were 713, so it was about half what they projected. And so a lot of this is due to the fact that, because you have to take this through Seeker, the reviewing agencies often require you to layer conservative factor on top of conservative factor on top of conservative factor, in your mode splits, in your people per car, and when the cars get there. What happens is 10% here, 10% there, it's vastly overestimating the trip generation here. So for this project, we still wanted to be conservative, we still knew that we needed to, we didn't want to toe the line and make sure we had a conservative buffer. So we looked at a lot of ownerships, both here and in other areas of the city, and then we believe we appropriately adjusted them, to really account for what this use was. In Red Hook, people that work in Red Hook overall have about a 40, as of between seven and 11 years ago, had about a 40%, 7% use of private automobiles.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven percent, right. There is no real large office use, certainly not any large tech office use, in Red Hook. Most of the uses in Red Hook are smaller scale, sole proprietors, restaurants, Red Hook container terminal, smaller industrial uses, people that can drive to work and pull into their lot and park their car there. This is a much different characteristic of use. You've got hundreds of thousands of square feet that would ideally be occupied by larger office tenants, younger people coming from the boroughs, some would come from outside the area, some might come from Westchester, New Jersey, Long Island, and they might drive. But we believe, based on the characteristics here, and the vast trends of people and how they're commuting to their locations, that very few people are gonna drive here. We think we've, if not doubled it, we're well over the estimate. This is affirmed by the brokerage community that doesn't believe we need that many parking spots. We've done surveys and other projects down the waterfront, a little closer to transit, but that show about 25% of the people who are in these uses are coming by car. People are just not taking cars here. A few things we're doing to make sure that we encourage other modes of transportation. So one is, we are providing a, here, it's an enclosed, secure, attended bike valet system that'll store over 150 bikes, and they will be protected and guarded all day, and that's an interior enclosed space. We are proposing to petition to have city bike brought onto the property, and have a city bike station or multiple stations at the ends of the property. We're also beginning talks...
How many bikes are in a city bike station?
So it varies, you can have a city bike station anywhere from 12 to over 36 bikes, there could be multiple stations, I think we've, on the site plan, we only have one located, is that right? I think we only have one, we can confirm that. And then also, we are, have started preliminary discussions about, you know, tenants these days, especially tenants in Brooklyn, they often provide their own shuttles from the subway, so often this is done, if the tenant's big enough, on a private, on a private basis, if there was like a Google here, they would run shuttles similar to IKEA. However, if we have smaller tenants, there's also a desire on our part to run our own shuttles, and we've been having preliminary talks with IKEA to piggyback on their subway shuttles and to use their ferry. They don't run these in the early morning, but they'd like to have some ability to share with us, because they have employees come, but the store's not open until 10:00. So we've had preliminary discussions with IKEA as a possibility of augmenting travel modes to get people from the subway to the site. We don't know exactly how that's, the shape it's gonna take, because we don't have tenants, and you wanna make sure it's done however, whatever tenants want. But, so we're thinking a lot about how to get people out of their cars to come here, nonetheless, even assuming that, assuming we weren't using those modes, we think the parking study is adequately demonstrated that there's enough parking.
Okay, so, we had two questions, we had a couple of questions about that assumption, right? Because all we can do is go on data, not on feeliness, right? So, well, add a little bit of feeliness, just because I know how long it is to walk from the ferry to the subway, and you think you are never gonna get there, and, because it's far, right? And therefore, to make a comparison between walking from New York Street Station to the Navy Yard, which is long, but you actually feel like you're gonna get there, and you eventually do get there, I don't understand why you pick, in that case, the lower number of 40% when the Navy Yard is 42%, so I don't get that at all, because it's actually less convenient to go to Red Hook. Everyone always thinks of Red Hook as being kind of remote, right? So I don't understand the selection of 40%. And then in terms of Red Hook population, why not believe that the people who are living in Red Hook are in fact the users, or let's say, the, either, both the users of the retail, but also the office workers, many of whom have cars, because it is so remote? So as we know, they have 40% car ownership, 47% car ownership. So why wouldn't you, if you're living more than a mile from work, drive your car if you know that there's a parking garage?
Right, so I'll let, with regard to the adjustment of the Navy Yard factors, I'm gonna let VHB handle that. With regard to the 47%, and VHB will correct me if I'm incorrect, the 47% I believe is from reverse journey to work data, which means people wherever they may live, people who work in Red Hook, who come to Red Hook to work, have a 47% car ownership rate, right? So that's why those are, the general metrics that you often use as a starting point, it's not people who live in Red Hook, it's people who work in Red Hook.
Okay, so then really, why wouldn't you use that number?
Right, and what I was getting to earlier is that, that number, if you look in Red Hook, if a neighborhood has a very high car ownership rate, the people who come to work, but those people who come to those workplaces, they're workplaces that are much more apt to be workplaces that would have drivers coming, than workplaces that would have perhaps younger employees that live in other parts of Brooklyn that would be more apt to find other modes, as we're seeing in Brooklyn, like a large office use, rather than other types of use. We believe the comparison may not be an apples-to-apples comparison, which is why the Navy Yard, which has uses that are much more similar to this use, being tech office, STEM offices, things like that, we think are more appropriate, because it's the same demographic of employee.
It's the same demographic, but working in the Navy Yard, you're a really easy bike ride from Dumbo, from Williamsburg, from Fort Greene, a super easy bike ride, the bike lanes are easy, it's super direct, and there are shuttles, right? So if you wanna make a real comparison to that, you'd have to say that all the people who are working at this site would be coming from the neighborhoods immediately around, and that's probably not true, because of course you're tapping into a broader working population. Arguably, there's sort of the techie groups, the design groups and all that stuff, so it's reaching out into Brooklyn, out to Bushwick, all of that. So how are all of those people getting there? It's too, it's, you know, it's not that it's too far to ride your bicycle, but those are devoted bike riders, that's not the city bike rider.
Yeah, I don't...
You're only providing 150 bike storage spaces for those people.
Right. First off, I don't know that, in any case, and again, VHB will back me up on numbers, that cycling is the primary mode that is, the people who don't drive will bike.
They do that.
It's, a lot, no, a lot of people do, but as far as, when the percentages break down of, you know, 42% is, could be the drivers, what's the other 58%? I don't know that cycling is, despite the fact that it may appear to be a lot of people, is the primary, I think it's more, it's more subway and bus people that then walk. There is a good amount of bike, of cyclists, but I don't know, that's the driver of the difference.
Right, but, so it's really far from the subway?
It's a mile and change from the subway.
It's, that's a long distance to go.
And there's a bus line that goes right by it.
Every single day. And have you tried that bus? Because it doesn't run that frequently.
No, the B-61 is, it's a long bus line, I understand, but you also have to realize, these are, you know, when you're dealing with office users and people that are coming from Brooklyn, I mean, we haven't pulled the numbers on Brooklyn car ownership in general, but, but office users that have to come to their office every day, and have to get there and get back, and have to pay for parking, you find, especially in the New York area, they're not a huge percentage of people that are getting in their car and driving to their off, to their traditional office space every day. We, as I said, you know, down at Industry City, closer to the subway, but down at Industry City, we're finding it's under 25%.
Really close to the subway?
It is, it is, yes, it's closer to the subway, right, understood. But there's a little bit of a mindset there, too, that subway, that subway goes north south, it doesn't go, you know, and it curves down, it's a line that you've gotta do multiple connections to to get east into Brooklyn, right? So yes, it's close to the subway, but...
Does the G-line? Which line is that?
No, this is the, this is the N and the R.
N and the R.
N and the R, at 36th Street. But I think the broader dynamic is that...
Borough Hall and you change.
What's that?
You go to Borough Hall and you change.
Yeah, but, you know, if you're coming, if you're coming from the east, you gotta go to Borough Hall, then you gotta change and go back down, back down south, and, you know, meanwhile, to Red Hook, there's a train, and, yes, it appears to be long.
It doesn't appear, it's a mile away.
Yeah, it's 20, it's a 20-block walk, right.
That's a really long...
And to the Navy Yard from York Street, it is close to a mile away as well. I mean, it's three-quarters of a mile.
Now, you said in your papers it's a half a mile, and another one is a mile and a half.
Well, Red Hook is, the Navy Yard is a huge development, right?
No, I know, but once you're, so where are you counting from? From Office A or Office C, right? It's like, which one?
We have to check that, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that, but...
But, look, so, long and short of it is, even at a higher, a somewhat higher ratio...
Yes.
The parking still works.
Okay, but so that's what we want you to show us, that at a higher ratio, the parking still works?
The parking still works, okay.
And then the other part of it is that I don't see how you do this without a shuttle from the subway, so I don't think it's an option to, maybe you'll work something out with IKEA, it's that this development needs to provide a shuttle that picks people up at the subway, so you know that you don't have drivers, so that you can count on your 40% or whatever.
So, but even if the, even if the, sort of, even if the Navy Yard numbers don't rely on that same mode?
The Navy Yard has a shuttle.
Well, I don't know, we'll have to look into it.
Navy Yard has a shuttle, from Williamsburg.
Right, okay. Okay, well, we'll have to, we'll have to talk to the applicant and see what we can work out on that.
Right, I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't even wanna do it, it seems sort of obvious to me to make it more desirable rental-wise.
Oh, no, we, we already, we're actually already planning to do it.
Okay.
The only question is, is we wanna make sure that we are able to operationalize a commitment in, for a shuttle whose specifics we don't know yet, because we don't have tenancies, right? We don't know, we don't know when they wanna run the shuttle, we don't know the frequency, we don't know the size, we don't know to what subway it's riding on.
Prescribe the frequency, we would just say, you have to have a shuttle that runs the subway for the, during peak demand times for workers, that's pretty clear.
Yeah, I think, I actually think that would probably be acceptable, but I'll just check the applicant.
Okay.
But that may not be the same time the IKEA shuttle runs, because IKEA opens later.
That's, that's correct. What IKEA's expressed to us is they would actually be interested in partnering with us on a cost-sharing basis, to expand their shuttle to an earlier time for their employees. They'd like an earlier shuttle, it just, right now, it doesn't make sense financially for them, so either it's through a sharing agreement with IKEA, or it's a separate shuttle on our behalf, but we think something could probably get worked out.
Right, but I mean, it's kind of interesting that you're saying this, IKEA's employees need a shuttle, it takes them from the subway to IKEA, right? Because their employees are having difficulty getting to work.
Right, but, but there are employees, if the shuttle's not there, and again, this is, it's technical, if the shuttle's not there, it doesn't mean their employees are driving the cars, right? They're finding other modes, it's not as convenient, it might take longer, but it doesn't necessarily, the lack of shuttle doesn't send people into the automobile mode, but I totally agree with you.
But IKEA's a retail place for, it's a completely different kind of a use, right?
You're right, you're right.
And so, I think the reason there was so much parking there is also because you're gonna be carrying your bed on your, on your car.
And oddly enough, people, we were, we were surprised, people that carry their beds, or carry their other things, don't use the parking, right? People use other modes to get to and from IKEA. You'd think if anybody is gonna fill up their parking lot, it's going to be IKEA, and it's vastly under all the projections, which, and that's where I was getting to, the broader concept is people in the city, people in the outer boroughs are getting to these places, and they're not driving. A lot of them are taking Ubers and things like that, so it's their vehicles, but not necessarily the demand for the parking.
So half of IKEA's parking lot is empty?
More than half is empty.
And this is during weekends also?
This is, so the quantitative numbers we did was from a afternoon peak in 2008 on a Saturday, I don't believe it was during their sale week, they have two sale weeks, the numbers are probably a little higher than that. So there are moments when it's more than that, but there's a lot of space.
But typical, okay.
Typical, there are hundreds and hundreds of spaces.
You also can't really compare, because right now, we're talking about the reduction in retail, based on online purchases, you can buy everything you want from IKEA online, you can go to the store, check out what it is you want, and then go home and order it.
You're right, our data, to be fair, our data was from 2008.
Okay, before there was some...
You know, okay.
But even then, it shows that you, the parking demand was less than what was...
Yes, in 2008, there was a Saturday demand of about 660 of the 1,200.
Right, even when the online shopping was not that popular.
In 2008, there was a good amount, but not, right, nine years ago.
But how long after opening was that?
It was, memories, we can get back to you, it was...
IKEA?
Yeah, IKEA, it was, it was not long after, a few months.
Oh, so I don't even think that that's a full test of it, yeah, because a lot of people didn't even know there was an IKEA, right? So it took a long time for sort of New Yorkers to learn that it was there. It's true that when I've been there, there's not been people in the parking lot, but maybe that was not on a big shopping day, or I don't know why not.
Right, this, this data, the general idea here is that IKEA has, is vastly overparked. I mean, that, and most people would agree with, that, just go, if you go there on any day, you'll see the exterior fields, certainly the fields further toward the water are just empty.
Why don't they come for a parking reduction?
Because they're retail.
They can't?
They can.
And it was a large scale, and it was a large scale, and...
There was no, it was subject to a number of six or seven different waterfront relief, parking was not, there was no availability.
Well, according to that, why wouldn't you make some sort of deal to use their empty spaces?
We, zoning would make us memorialize that in perpetuity, which is difficult for them corporately, I think.
So then what was the community board referring to when they said, "Provide binding agreements for off-site parking sources"?
Binding agreements for off-site parking sources?
That's in their resolution.
I don't know.
Were you at the hearing?
No, we were at all the hearings, and there was a lot of, there was discussion about, about deals for shuttles, working out a deal for shuttle for alternate means, there was a discussion about free parking, I think they might have been referring to, if it's, if it's not enough, what are you gonna do? And so can you work out a deal with IKEA, can you work out a deal with a neighbor to provide more if you need it?
Okay, can you check your notes on that?
We will check on that.
Okay. And they were also concerned about the cobblestone, same.
Just so you guys know, right, so, as you probably know, it's not up to us, it's up to DOT, but we are preferences to retain the cobblestones, if DOT allows us to. They didn't want them for IKEA. They didn't want them for IKEA, but maybe they weren't pushed hard enough, so we'd like to keep.
Okay. So I think.
Can you, sorry, there was also another community board request that 10% of the proposed parking spaces be set aside as pre-parking to allow for a broader income mix of visitors to the site?
I, yeah, they, they said that. I, I think, not knowing any of the tenants and not knowing any, how the finances work in this, we're not ready to commit to free parking at this point.
On one project, we directed the applicant to provide free parking, so.
Then the question is, who, who gets, who gets the free parking? Are you means testing people for free parking? What are these spots? Do they come early?
Well, the problem is.
It's very hard to work that.
If you have to pay for your parking, it might encourage people to just park throughout the area and the streets.
Right, what, what.
And that's something that we don't want.
What, what actually is based on models, this type of model elsewhere, what's likely to happen if there are larger tenants, is, is the landlord will work out a deal with the tenant as part of the rent to allocate a certain number of parking spots for their employees, and the tenant would provide it as a benefit to their employees. And, you know, and that's how a lot of these, these spots would get allocated. I have to say, it doesn't make financial sense for the park, for the owner and the parking operator to have people parking in the neighborhood and have their lot go empty when they could earn some revenue on it, so they will probably price it to market with respect to getting some people in there.
Yeah. So, I can't find the parking study right now, or, so the, but I don't believe the parking study did an on-street park analysis, did it? An on-street available parking analysis?
No, I, we did not do an on-street analysis.
That is something that we request that's standard, because what we're trying to determine is whether, if you're wrong in your estimate, and for instance, I think it should be run with 47%, because that's the data for the journey to work. That's the exact data, right? Then if it turns out that it's close, because right now, it's not that close, if it turns out it's close, then you're relying on the street system for the parking. And, right?
So, I, I mean, their demand, and granted, and I'll just to, to say why staff didn't ask for the on-street, is that typically, we, we want that when it's close.
Yes.
They're providing.
200 extra.
Yeah, there's a, there's a buffer of 200 spaces, so we were like.
Yes.
They're like, you know.
I, I understand.
Like, right, it seemed like a big buffer, so that's why we didn't.
Yes, I understand. Oh, I see.
If we must ask for it.
Yeah, I see, I see.
At staff level, we were like, let's.
Yes, I get that. Because that was using 40% utilization as opposed to what is the area, the census tract standard of 47%.
So at, at 47, the availability goes down to about 65, 70 in the highest peak, right? So we're under, it's closer at 47, but we're, we're, you know, we're still under.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So you'd have 65 unused spaces?
So at 47%?
By 40.
The number is?
In peak hour.
In the peak hour, how many spaces free?
40.
40 extra spaces. Okay, so it's 40 under, using the 47% metric.
So during, using 47%, at peak period, you would still have 40 spaces unused?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So you still have buffer that's fairly.
Yeah.
And also, if, are we requiring the shuttle bus as a commission?
Yeah.
Because that also.
That would reduce the.
I'm not sure then on on-street parking study would be necessary.
I think with the, with the, with the shuttle, then on-street.
Right. Because that's the thing, we didn't know your number for 47%. We're going to need to see the studies plus the math, right? Because we didn't see the math. So we need to see the study revised with the 47%. The math calculated because Commissioner Otley-Brown found errors in what she thought, she was finding errors in the analysis. Okay, so, let's say, assuming that you still have that kind of a range, and there's a shuttle bus that operates during the peak hour demands from the subway, then, and it's a regular shuttle bus, in other words, it's during the peak hours, it's regularly picking people up, because it's no good if it just shows up at, you know, 8 o'clock and then you're out of luck.
Right, right.
Right? So if we did that, then it would potentially reduce the demand below the 47%, so then we'd have more of a buffer, right?
I'm looking at your parking demand, and it's like you actually have zero demand from retail.
Yes.
And, you know, suppose you're going to have like some little coffee shop or a restaurant, I can't believe that everyone is going to come and leave within an hour.
The, the notion on local retail is that it's not drawing people from a distance that would require them to get in their car and drive there. Local retail's intended to be, if you've got to get in your car, you're not going there, you're local.
Then a restaurant does not really local retail.
Um.
A waterfront restaurant.
It, it, it may or may not be a restaurant. You're right, in, in the case of a restaurant, there may be a couple of people that drive. The people that drive to restaurants are not, you know, are not overlapping with the peak hour of people that are commuting to work. They tend to, they're not parking in the garage at the same time people are parking work, they're coming to the restaurant at night or during the middle of the day, so it's.
Or a weekend.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's, that's going to, that would move the needle much on the, on the analysis.
But I know that, for instance, that, I don't forget the name of it, the lobster place that's right opposite the ferry, that is packed all the time with cars pulled up in front.
During the day.
During the day, all day. Making a mess.
Not there parking?
Yeah, well, are they allowed to?
No, they park in fairway probably now.
No, they just park everywhere. They just sort of park.
There's, there's, there's also inside some street parking in that area. I don't know if it's occupied, but there is street parking there.
Is this, is this solely an accessory parking facility, or is it a public parking?
It is solely an accessory parking facility.
Yeah. So, but, so a lot of people will say they're going to go shop at the whatever, whatever, and they'll use it.
In, in function, that is a, that is, right, that is merely a semantic difference.
Yeah.
No, I, I just.
Right, okay. I mean, arguably, it could alleviate the crazy parking problem that they have at that restaurant, where they have sort of a valet thing, which I think means, take the car and drive around and look for parking.
That's a lot of valets.
Yeah.
Full employment program.
Right. What?
Oh, no.
No. All right, so, any other comments? Are there any speakers on this? I think everyone in the audience is related to the project. Okay, no, no speakers on this? Okay, so, I think we do need, so the revised parking study using 47% utilization and an assumption of shuttle buses, so build that in, which will function on a regular basis during peak hours from subway, and indicate about your, I think the bike storage is already shown on the drawings, right?
Yeah, yes, make sure it's called out if it's not.
Yeah, and where this location of the city bike is, that's really DOT's problem issue. What else? Anything else? I think that's it. What?
I said, there, there are city bike stations.
Right, they're going to add one as.
We, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I don't think we had anything else, right? I just want to make sure that.
I had the question about the coastal A-zone. Did they require anything special regarding part of the site being in the coastal A-zone?
The coastal inconsistency determination required, I don't, I don't believe it required anything above and beyond the general building code.
The dry floodproofing.
The dry floodproofing, the, the freeboard, the, the location of the elevations, basically.
Okay, and, and the flood in the space, sure.
Well, they'll take care of it.
And the state has been looking at it.
Yes, I just was curious.
Yes, okay. And then, the only thing we said that we'll do in the interim is we wanted DOT to just look at if it hasn't already, maybe it has in the course of your many approvals by so many agencies. Has DOT looked at the flow of traffic around here?
So this, no, because, because we didn't trip any thresholds for incremental traffic analysis, it didn't go to DOT's planning group, who's the group that usually would review the seeker. We internally, just for our own purposes, looked at some of the, some, some back-of-the-envelope numbers as to vehicular quantities and what it would do in the peak hour. We've got, I think actually they're in the application, some of our estimates, but I don't, I don't think DOT has, has done a formal review or sign-off.
Okay. No, it was more like, we're looking at it, DOT has a chance to just look at best practices, it's not, sometimes we do these parking reductions, and we see that a reduction in parking may have a really bad impact on, if, if we're wrong in our estimates, may have a really bad impact on traffic. So then that's when we ask DOT to do a full review. This is more like.
I was recalling the ones sent to DOT and actually had them do, there was a intersection analysis, was when we wanted to see, we had that, this grocery store across the street.
And a turntable system.
Yeah, we were trying to see if cars entering and exiting would create a problem with the intersection.
And that's actually great. So on the, on the inns, there's a tremendous amount of reservoir space inside, because to get up to the two cores, you can actually go all along that red dot on the side to go to the back, that you can actually go, so upon entering, you can go to this drop-off if you're, if you're taking one of these cores, or all the way back to this one if you're taking these. So there's a, there's a tremendous amount, a tremendous number of reservoir spots, so we anticipate absolutely no backflow onto the street as a result of this.
So, so your traffic consult, your parking consultant calculated how, what the wait time is in this, in review, did they do that when they were?
Quantitatively, I'm not sure. I think we did, we, we certainly made sure that we complied with all the zoning regulations with respect to reservoir spaces as a percentage of the number of spaces that are here. How many cars would be flowing in, it's, it's hard to quantify, you have to make assumptions with respect to how quick the valet takes the car and moves it out.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
But just at, at a, at an initial glance at this, there was, it, you'd be hard pressed to find a garage that has over 50 reservoir spaces, spaces like we have, it's, it's almost unprecedented.
But I mean, for instance, you have a parking consultant, obviously, on such a big project, right? So, and interestingly, on that other one, where they were using turntables, because it was actually a very tight site.
Sure.
Where they calculated that they needed something extraordinary, like four minutes per car and turn it and get it up to the next level and ready for the next. I mean, it was pretty amazing how fast they addressed, actually get the car in the space and, and get it out, which was the other concern we had. But it seems to me that they would already know what your, what your turn-in and off-the-roadway timing is, so they could just provide that to us, you know?
Let me look into that. Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know offhand.
Okay, so this is all self-park, though, right? No, this is a valet.
No, it's all.
The other one was.
The red on the end, there is a certain portion of self-park here. It is, it is a small portion of the overall garage, but on the end.
Which is the.
Yeah, sorry. And, and sorry, this is a little bit mislabeled because, yes, this takes you, this is the self-park zone, right here. Individual spots, a lot of them are handicap accessible spots, right, to achieve that minimum standard. You can also come out here and drop your, drop it off here if you're going up to one of these building cores, because they don't want you walking through the body of their movement. So for this core, you'd come up here, for this core, you'd come up here, and this would be self-park.
So how do I know which one I'm doing? Like, how do I know I've just, do I have to pay more for the valets? And so there's a sign that says valet, $5 versus self-park?
So self-park, because of the minimum number of spaces and the large square footage that they're serving, is most likely, other than being handicapped accessible spots, a very small amount of, number of spots for people that have purchased that right to, you know, their VIPs, their executives, people who, who want to just get in their car and go.
So that's a monthly zone.
It, it is, again, it's, since there are tenants, we haven't yet fully fleshed this out, but it's likely to be, it's very few spots, it's likely to be, be, be people that have monthly.
I would think lots of tenant-specific, so a tenant would say, we need these cars because we have people go out and drive around during the day.
Right, what I was, what I was saying to Commissioner Monson is, is it's likely that when tenants lease up large blocks of space, they would also lease with those space the rights to use X number of parking spots, give them as a, as a perk to their employees or at a discounted rate, and they would also probably negotiate to get five spots for them that are self-park spots. And we would use wayfinding signage inside, so it's clear that you stay to the right if you're going to the rear cores, go to the left if you're going to the front cores.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So the reservoir, though, is for both the self-park and the valet parking, though?
Yeah, yes. Self-park, you don't need a whole lot of reservoir because you're just pulling right into your space. But yes, if you're pulling into your space and you get caught up in people waiting, you, 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 your self-bike get caught up, you're right.
Depends on who your self-parks are. Right? That's why. Okay. All right, so I think we're, we're really just missing the, the, the recalculation, showing us the backup numbers so that we can follow along and figure out how you got to the answers on each of the pieces of data, and then the shuttle bus issue, okay?
Great.
Okay.
I know Commissioner Otley-Brown had identified some math errors.
Yeah.
We can, we can send that to you specifically.
Oh, she had specific math.
Well, I think we'll talk to her and see if, make sure that you find it, if you find it.
She said it was regarding office daily person trips.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think more than that, she want, she also wanted to see, if you do the math, then we can check, it's easier to check how you came to the conclusion, and that's sort of standard, that all these parking analyses should have the backup, like the math backup.
Understood.
Okay. Okay.
What, math error? Yeah, we can, we can address the math error here, or?
No, no, no.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll.
It has to be a resubmission.
You got it.